Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ed Flynn. I am the City Council President. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube by visiting boston.gov/citycouncil-tv. I'd like to ask my colleagues and those in the audience to please silence their phones and electronic devices. Thank you. We'd also like to please ask everyone in the audience to be respectful and do not disrupt the meeting while you are here. If you are disruptive, you will be asked to leave, and if you fail to comply, you will be escorted out. Please also note that according to the City Council rules, there are no signs allowed in the chamber. I'd like to ask everyone to be respectful to each other. Roll call. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counselor Royo.
Counselor Baker. Counselor Bock.
Present.
Counselor Braden.
Present.
Counselor Coletta.
Here.
Counselor Fernandez-Anderson.
Counselor Flaherty.
Here.
Counselor Flynn.
Here.
Counselor Lara.
Counselor Louie Jean.
Present.
Counselor Mejia.
Here.
Counselor Murphy.
And Counselor Worrell.
Here.
A quorum. Mr. President. I have been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. This week's clergy is Pastor Bruce Wall from the Global Ministries Christian Church, invited by City Council Michael Flaherty. Counselor Flaherty, would you like to come to the podium to introduce our clergy for today?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have, as you mentioned, the privilege and the honor to introduce Pastor Bruce Wall, the pastor of Global Ministries Church in Dorchester, retired clerk magistrate of the Boston Juvenile Court, founder and CEO of Boston Praise Radio and TV, Boston Black News and WBG LP 102.9 FM radio. Prior to that, he's been around for a while, a little longer than I have, I think, but he served as a 12th Baptist as a young man and spent 14 years as a youth minister before taking his ministry to the streets. He also became the co-pastor of the Dorchester Temple Baptist in Carben Square back in 93, working alongside of his white co-pastor to cultivate multiracial congregation. Pastor Wall now serves, as mentioned, as pastor of the Global Ministries Church in Dorchester, continuing his work and his ministry in the community. Married a little over 35 years with three children, no grandchildren yet, but who knows what's in store. He has been a valuable resource and partner and friend for me and for the city and for our neighborhoods. Our families go back many, many years. He worked very closely with my aunt Winnie, and she was also my godmother, and also served and presided over her funeral many years ago when she died at a very young age. So, no further ado, a dear friend and great friend to the City Council and to the city of Boston, Pastor Bruce Wall, Global Ministries. Great to see you again. Thank you.
Let us pray. Father, today we thank you for giving us life and another opportunity to live our lives for you. The Boston City Council is that body of men and women that make decisions that will impact our city. Our City Council President, Ed Flynn, needs you to guide him as he leads and guides the council members in all of their decisions and all of their policies that will be discussed and eventually implemented. Bless our at-large councilors as they provide leadership for the entire city of Boston. Equally, use the district councilors as they provide leadership and hope for people in their districts. Today, as we start this meeting, we need your guidance to stop the violence and homicides in our city. Today, we need your guidance as to how we can more effectively educate our children in our schools. Today, we need to create and develop a sustaining plan that will lead to the healing and restoration of the men and women who live on our city streets. And finally, Lord, bring our city councilors together as they tackle some of the most difficult issues that could divide them. Bring them together as one united body called the City Council. And we pray this and believe that you can do this. In Jesus' name, we all say amen. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the black, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, my friend. Thank you, Pastor Bruce Wall, and thank you for your incredible service to the residents of Boston for so many years. Yep. Mr. Clerk, please let the record be reflected that Counselor Royo, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, and Counselor Murphy are present. We run to the first order of business, approval of the minutes. Seeing and hearing no discussion on this matter, the chair moves to approve the minutes from the last meeting. All those in favor of the minutes from the last meeting say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Thank you. The minutes of the last meeting stand as approved. Communications from her honor, the mayor. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 1499 and 1500 together, please?
Docket number 1499, message in order for your approval in order to reduce the fiscal year '22 appropriation for the Reserve for Collective Bargaining by $46,778 to provide funding for the Inspection Services Department for the fiscal year '23 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the city of Boston and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. And docket number 1500, message in order for the supplemental appropriation order for the Inspection Services Department for fiscal year '23 in the amount of $46,778 to cover the fiscal year '23 costs contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the city of Boston and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. And docket number 1500, message in order for the supplemental appropriation order for the Inspection Services Department for fiscal year '23 in the amount of $46,778 to cover the fiscal year '23 costs contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the city of Boston and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. The terms of the contract are July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2023. The major provisions of the contract include base wage increases of 2%, 1.5%, and 2% to be given in October of each fiscal year of the contract term, as well as other items, including a boot allowance.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Bock, the Chair of the Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology. Counselor Bock, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I'm going to be requesting suspension and passage of these two dockets as they represent a settled contract for a very small number of workers, the nine electrical inspectors in ISD, and they reflect the pattern and other provisions that we've been discussing in prior hearings over the course of this year. So, there's really, there's nothing novel in here. Whenever there is, or it's a large sum, I want to hold a hearing, but I think for these it would be great to get the back pay to these nine inspectors. Just to refresh the council, the clerk already read that it follows the pattern of the 2%, 1.5%, and 2% increases on the wage side. There's an updated military leave policy, which, again, we reviewed in the past, it just reflects a federal update. Juneteenth is added to the contract as a recognized holiday. There is a small amendment to Article 14, sick leave and personal leave in their contract, just to clarify that employees need to call in sick before the start of their shift. There is the IBW members here, they, as this COVID-19 pandemic stipend that we've done for a lot of city workers, they'll get a one-time, nonprecedent-setting lump sum payment of $1,000 minus standard deductions. Again, we've seen that in the other parallel contracts settled. And then, and I just, I asked, I'm reading all of the little terms since we're not having a hearing, so there's a 75% increase in the travel allowance from $15.25 per day to $16 per day. And there's a clothing footwear allowance in the amount of $250. Yeah, so those are the, those are the little finicky things, but the basic message is these are nine electrical inspectors. This is them catching up with the same contract form that we've evaluated for lots of other units in the city, and we'd love to get them this back pay. So, Mr. President, I'd ask for suspension and passage of both dockets.
Thank you, Counselor Bock. Counselor Bock seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1499. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket is passed. Counselor Bock seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1500. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket is passed. I'd also like to acknowledge the professional work of the IBW. Some of the members are present here today. And I'd also like to acknowledge the ironworkers, local seven as well, for their tremendous work. Reports of committees. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 1392, please?
Docket number 1392, the Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on November 9th, 2022. Docket number 1392, in ordinance amending the city of Boston code related to closed captioning on public-facing televisions submits a report recommending the ordinance ought to pass.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Royo, the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations. Counselor Royo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Committee on Government Operations held a working session on Friday, December 2nd, 2022. This ordinance would amend the city of Boston code of ordinances by adding new sections and subsections regarding closed captioning activation. The purpose of this ordinance is to expand accessible communication in places of public accommodation. The ordinance requires public facilities in Boston to activate closed captioning on closed caption television receivers in public areas during regular business hours. However, it does not apply to public entertainment venues. The mayor's commission for persons with disabilities has jurisdiction over this ordinance and the authority to investigate complaints of noncompliance. I'd like to thank Council President Ed Flynn and Councilors Lucy Louie Jean and Julia Mejia for sponsoring this matter, as well as my council colleagues who attended the hearing, Counselor Kenzie Bock and Counselor Erin Murphy. I'd also like to thank members of the administration for attending, Kristin McCosh, who is our disability commissioner and the ADA Title II coordinator for the city of Boston, Wes Ireland, Chair of the Commission for Persons with Disabilities, and Carl Richardson, Treasurer of the Commission for Persons with Disabilities. We were also joined by advocates Darian Gambrell, Executive Director of Deaf Incorporated, and Kat DeVar, or Devar, Director of Communication Access Services for Massachusetts Commission for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing, and I'd like to thank them for their attendance and participation as well. Passage of this docket will increase accessibility to information for individuals with disabilities. This ordinance does so by expanding accessibility and participation to individuals with disabilities in public spaces and on public-facing TVs. The provisions of this ordinance can be accomplished without imposing undue burden on businesses, and as Chair of Government Operations, I recommend that this docket ought to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Royo. Counselor Royo seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1392. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Docket 1392 is passed. Matter's recently heard for possible action. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 1094, please?
Docket number 0194, order for a hearing regarding a review of COVID-19 recovery funds.
The chair recognizes Counselor Bock, the Chair of the Committee on Boston's COVID-19 Recovery. Counselor Bock, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. We had a really productive hearing. This was a matter that was sponsored by myself and Counselor Braden. Want to thank yourself, President Flynn, Counselor Murphy, and Counselor Louie Jean for joining us, and also Counselor Coletta, who was sick but was watching in real time, and we got some detailed questions in for her. I would commend to all councilors the extensive update packet that the administration produced for this hearing because it was a great snapshot of kind of where everything is on ARPA spending. This was really the goal being to say, okay, we passed these, you know, authorizations in July. Where are, where's the administration in terms of getting monies actually out the door? Grant agreement signed, RFPs out in the case of things that the city's going to spend. And I think, I think we learned a lot across a whole host of topic areas, and it was very, it was very informative. So, yeah, just thank everybody for coming, and if you haven't, if you haven't taken a look at that packet, probably a worthwhile thing for folks to do. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Bock.
Oh, and obviously would like it to stay in committee.
Say it again, please?
Obviously would like this docket to stay in committee.
Okay, yep.
Yeah.
Docket 1094 will remain in committee. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 1148?
Docket number 1148, order for a hearing on the needs and services for migrant populations.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Louie Jean, the Chair of the Committee on Civil Rights and Immigration Advancement. Counselor Louie Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. On December 5th, the Committee on Civil Rights and Immigrant Advancement held a hearing on docket 1148, a hearing to discuss the needs and services for migrant populations, sponsored by myself. The committee had a robust and long hearing, went nearly three and a half hours, and I was glad to be joined by Councilors Flynn, Counselor Braden, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Tanya Fernandez-Anderson, and a letter of absence from Counselor Coletta. Thank you to the administration, specifically to the mayor's Office of Immigrant Advancement Director Monique Tunuen, and Deputy Director of Housing Stability, Danielle Johnson, for their participation and for actively engaging in the questions. I also want to give a special thank you to all of the panelists. Liz Sweet from Mira Coalition, Dr. Gerard Gabot from IFC, Mira and Albert from Lawyers for Civil Rights, Pastor Kiki from DFO Fléer L'Isant from Haitian Americans United, Aloisa Maria Galvao from the Brazilian Women's Group, Bishop Nicholas Homosil from the Voice of the Gospel Tabernacle Church, Patricia Montez from Centro Represente, Kevin Lamb from the Asian American Resource Workshop, Anna Alonso from the TPS Committee, Norielis de Jesus from La Colaborativa, Leo Olson, Daisy Gutierrez-Zeta Adames from Mutual Aid Eastie, and Claire Lewis Oklani from Acadon. We had a really robust conversation about the needs, oh, and I think a robust conversation about the needs of our migrant populations, something that was brought to the fore, as many of us know, when, that, you know, the political stunt engaged in by Governor DeSantis, but these are crises that our communities have been dealing with for quite some time, and they've been doing the impossible on a shoestring budget. I also want to thank those who offered public testimony, John Riordan and Amanda Stewart from Children's Hospital, Larry Siemens from Family Aid, and then Letitia Pierre-Louis from Equity Now &amp; Beyond. And we also were grateful that we had translators to make sure that everyone who was here could participate, and that's Maria Bastardo, Spanish translation, Roseanne Rose for Portuguese, and Marie Luider for Haitian Creole. I want to thank you to central staff for staying late and helping run a smooth hearing and also helping make sure that we had translators. For those unable to attend, I encourage that you review the tape and hear firsthand how our hospitals, shelters, and community organizations are on the brink as Boston has seen a substantial increase in migrant families, and we have a duty to really help those who are fleeing persecution. We here, and both at the city level and the state level, have the ability and the capacity to make meaningful resources available, and so we should do that. And, you know, as we look forward to the budget season and what we're able to do, we have to make sure that we are centered those who have been historically excluded. And so, I'm asking that this hearing remain in committee, and I'll be refiling it also to ensure that we hold ourselves accountable to the work that we have to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Louie Jean. Docket 1148 will remain in committee. Mr. Clerk, can you reflect the record that Counselor Lara is present? Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1144 and 1145 together, please?
Docket number 1144, order for a hearing to address the facility conditions of all BCYF pools and to ensure city services to all residents. And docket number 1145, order for a hearing to address the current lifeguard shortage affecting the BCYF pools.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Bock, the Chair of the Committee on City Services, Innovation Technology. Counselor Bock, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. We held this hearing yesterday morning. Both dockets were sponsored by Counselor Murphy. And thank you to yourself, Counselor Coletta, and Counselor Flaherty for also joining. I think it was a really useful conversation with BCYF about the sort of twin challenges of both staffing our pools and making sure that they are up to snuff on the capital side. We know there's a lot of challenges there, and we really kind of got a chance to walk through with BCYF the status of all the pools, the ones that are open, the ones that could be open. We actually have four right now, several of which have just finished repair projects. We have four pools that are closed simply because they don't have staffing right now. And then, you know, and then we have a number that are kind of in the middle of repair projects or that are waiting on some further capital assessment. And so, I think we walked out of the hearing with a much clearer sense of where they all are, but also with sort of a strong message reflected back to BCYF that, which I think is sort of carrying on the work of the council on the Clarity Pool earlier this year, that, you know, just really making sure that we can communicate with everybody and have the public and the council understand the cascade of things that have to happen and how we're maximizing having our pools open and functional for our constituents. I think it was, it was a really useful, productive conversation. And then, obviously, on the lifeguard side, you know, anybody who wants to lifeguard, please sign up to do that for BCYF. We, of course, have a bunch of full-time positions in lifeguarding because of our pools that are open year-round indoors, and that's in addition to the seasonal summer lifeguarding needs. So, it was, it was great, and I thank Counselor Murphy for calling the hearings. And again, Mr. President, would ask that these matters stay in committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Dockets 1144 and 1145 will remain in committee. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0963.
Docket number 0963, order for a hearing regarding enhancing Boston's COVID recovery via grants provided by the bipartisan infrastructure law.
The chair recognizes Counselor Bock, the Chair of the Committee on Boston's COVID-19 Recovery. Counselor Bock, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sorry for all these reports. So, this, this matter was sponsored by myself, Counselor Coletta, and Counselor Worrell, and Counselor Murphy, Flynn, Braden, and Fernandez-Anderson also joined, so thank you. This was kind of a companion to the ARPA update hearing, was a hearing to just check in on where we are for all the competitive applications for monies being made available through the bipartisan infrastructure law, and then actually also through the Inflation Reduction Act, because there's a lot of competitive grant things there. So, we had a really broad cross-spectrum team. Chris Osgood was here, along with Casey Brock Wilson, Inez Foster, and then we had Commissioner Brizius from the Environment Department, our CIO, Santiago Garcés, I'm trying to mentally remember where they all were, somebody else who, Venite Guta from BTD. So, it was like a pretty in-the-weeds, again, detailed discussion of the grants that we've been applying for, where we've been successful, we're waiting to hear where we've been unsuccessful. You know, there's some kind of slightly crazy stuff, like the who gets the next round of clean school buses, like green electric school buses, is literally being decided by a lottery, so we're on a wait list for that. But there's a lot of grants where we have been successful, and it reflects the fact that the city's putting together really strong applications. So, it was a good conversation, and again, I'll just make sure after this hearing that councilors get the packet from both that hearing and the Monday one, because I think there's probably about 100 pages there of really detailed information about what the administration's doing on both fronts. And, Mr. President, I would ask that this matter also remain in committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bock. 0963 will remain in committee. Motion, orders, and resolutions. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 1501, please?
Docket number 1501, Counselor Royo offer the following: Petition for a special law relative to enact directing the city of Boston Police Department to waive the maximum age requirement for police officers for Wilfred Decosa.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Royo. Counselor Royo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This kind of home rule petition has been somewhat standard in the last couple of years. While I've been here, it's a maximum age requirement for the Boston Police Department's Academy is 40 years old, and the passage of this docket does not guarantee an applicant, in this case, Mr. Wilfred Decosa, a position or an entry into the academy. It simply waives the age requirement, which is 40 years old. Mr. Decosa is 44. In this particular case, Mr. Decosa moved to the United States from Haiti, and his process towards permanent residency took several years longer than he expected, which stalled his ability to apply for the Boston Police Department's Academy. Mr. Decosa is just four years over that maximum age requirement, which is set at 40 years old, and is Chair of Government Operations. I'm actually seeking suspension of Rule 33 today to pass docket 1501 today, if possible, so we can send this on its way to the House.
Thank you, Counselor Royo. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter, or would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Bock, Counselor Braden, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Lara, Counselor Louie Jean, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Worrell, please add the chair. Counselor Royo is seeking suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1501. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket is passed. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1502.
Docket number 1502, Counselor Coletta offer the following: Order for a hearing to establish a climate change and environmental justice curriculum in Boston public schools.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Coletta. Counselor Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I'd like to add Counselor Lara and Counselor Louie Jean as original cosponsors.
Seeing and hearing no objection. Counselor Lara and Counselor Louie Jean are added. The chair recognizes Counselor Coletta.
Thank you so much. I present this hearing order on the heels of a historic visit to Boston from the Prince and Princess of Wales, who both sought to highlight the climate crisis and celebrate innovative solutions to help solve it. I had the honor of attending the Earthshot Awards and was inspired by the nominees who are using cutting-edge technology and science to curb CO2 emissions, protect marine life in our oceans, preserve our natural habitats, and much more. Naturally, I started wondering about their life trajectories and what brought them to that moment and to be leaders in helping humanity against our biggest fight. And then, I thought about how we are fostering our own climate leaders here in the city of Boston. In our lifetimes, our children will inherit a higher frequency of severe weather events, coastal flooding and storm surge, droughts, and food insecurity. Therefore, it is only right that we invest in them and that we set them up for success with the tools necessary to potentially be the next Earthshot winners, or at the very least conscious stewards of our environment and citizens who care about our planet. This is why I'm bringing this proposal forward with urgency, understanding full well that I'll need to refile next year, but it's imperative that we call attention now to the fact that Massachusetts ranks in the lowest tier for the inclusion of climate change-related content in STEAM curriculums. Additionally, our kids should fully understand the concept of environmental justice so that the next generation of leaders can easily identify and call out environmental injustices or when a population bears a disproportionate share of negative environmental consequences. Right now, there is no uniform standard in BPS or at the state level in providing a foundational education related to climate change or environmental justice. So, we have a real opportunity here to close the gaps, utilize strong community partners, tap into our growing STEAM sector with meaningful pathways, and produce conscious citizens who will ultimately be the ones to save us from ourselves. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Coletta. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter, or would anyone like to add their name? The chair recognizes Counselor Louie Jean. Counselor Louie Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, President Flynn, and I want to thank the sponsor for adding me and for thinking about the importance of this. I think this broadly is important as we think about the practical education that our young kids need to receive, and especially learning about climate change and climate justice, a topic that wasn't mentioned in any of my science classes until I got to college. So, it's imperative that we are thinking holistically about how we are teaching our young kids about the things that they're already learning and advocating on, and making sure that our schools line up with the, with the lived experience and realities that they are facing and that we are facing as a nation. And we have a lot of opportunities here to connect folks and our young kids to STEAM jobs and opportunities just here. There was a hearing, an ARPA hearing, when Chief Mary Emma White-Hammond talked about the need for us to increase our efforts to get more of our young girls interested in the Youth Green Jobs Program. And what better way of doing that than making sure that climate justice is more embedded into into our public school education? And so I think this is a great opportunity for us to think about what curriculum looks like in our public schools for so many of our young kids who are already leading the way on this issue, but also as a way of getting folks prepared to really think about how they can see themselves in building the future and the green infrastructure that we need here for our city. So I think you and I look forward to working with you on this.
Thank you, Council Louis Jean. The Chair recognizes Council Lara. Council Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and thank you, Council Coletta, for bringing this important issue and discussion today and for allowing me to be a co-sponsor. As a B P S graduate, I would have loved to have this kind of curriculum offered to me, but one of the things that I do remember is that education around environmental justice and climate justice was absent in my own schooling. And climate change is going to be the norm for our young people. It's ultimately going to be the waters that they are swimming in, and the resiliency of our city and of our state is going to continue to be all of our responsibility. I think that this is an opportunity to prepare them with the proper education, to be stewards of the land and to fight for its protection and the protection of their communities. I think a climate justice curriculum could also open up career pathways for our students so that they can be at the front lines of an issue that would undoubtedly directly impact them. I'm really excited to work with B P S, the maker, and my fellow co-sponsor to make this a reality, and I hope that we can come to a place where this is going to be commonplace in Boston public schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Lara. The Chair recognizes Council Braden. Council Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to thank Council Coletta and the cosponsors for this, bringing this forward. I had the great honor and pleasure of visiting Boston Green Academy last, last Friday morning, the morning after the class from the Green Academy made a presentation at the, at the Kennedy Library about environmental justice, climate justice. Incredible young leaders in our, in this particular school, and they have a curriculum that, that really addresses this issue. But, you know, to have that level of concentration and interest in one particular area, this is, this is really valuable and important information that all of our students should be having access. These are the, the future leaders. Climate justice and environmental justice are, are critical issues. It was really impressive to hear the young people talk about the impacts of, of past history, you know, the impacts of redlining, and how that has contributed to deforestation and, and heat zones and, and in our cities, disinvestment in our neighborhoods, and also the whole issue about the prevalence of illnesses like, of asthma, et cetera. So that, having an interest in this area and getting a good, strong curriculum in environmental justice and sustainability and climate justice, the, the, the learning that's in this space will contribute to incredible applications in later life and career opportunities for our young people. So I wholeheartedly support this and look forward to the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Braden. Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Council Royal, Council Bark, Council Braden, Council Fernandez Anderson, Council Flaherty, Council Mejia, Council Murphy, Council Worrell, please add the Chair. Docket 1502 will be referred to the Committee on Education. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1503, please.
Document number 1503, Councilors Lara and Louis Jean offer the following. Resolution calling for immediate action to improve the inclusionary development policy to remedy Boston's affordable housing crisis.
The Chair recognizes Council Lara. Council Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I would like to suspend the rules and add Council Braden as an original cosponsor.
Seeing and hearing, no objection. Council Braden is added. The Chair recognizes Council Lara.
Thank you. I want to start off by thanking the housing organizers who continue to do the work to ensure that our residents have the right to remain in their community, fight to expand access to affordable housing and slow down displacement. This resolution is ultimately a call to action to the administration, administration, excuse me. Earlier this year, as the Chair of the Housing and Community Development Committee, we held a hearing to explore changes to the inclusionary development policy, to redefine what we considered affordability using the area median income, and to lower the threshold that would click, that would ultimately set in motion the inclusionary development policy. And we're a year in, and we haven't received an updated timeline to the reform for inclusionary development policy from the administration. The inclusionary development units, the I D P units, as we usually call them, represent pathways to more affordable housing options for middle, middle and low-income residents of our city. And they're generally folks who are in the middle, who can't, who still can't afford market rate units in Boston. As I often mention, I live in an I D P unit myself and have been with my son for the last five, almost six years. And as a single parent who has direct experience with housing insecurity, access to an affordable unit in my neighborhood has been stabilizing for my family. Many people in Boston are just like me, and they're just one check away from becoming unhoused, and many more are already paying over 30% of their income in rent. The inclusionary development policy was last changed in 2015. It was due for an update in 2018, and a previous administration had a study done in 2019. We are now four years overdue for an update, and every month that goes by, more luxury developments are being approved. We're losing the chance to get long-term affordable units we need to stabilize our neighborhoods. Now Mayor Wu has already commissioned a feasibility study to make changes to the inclusionary development policy, which is an important first move, but these changes may take until next summer or beyond to finalize. In the meantime, every, every development is grandfathered in under our current policy. From January to September of 2022, projects with nearly 3,000 new units were filed with the Boston, with the B P D A, excuse me, and projects with nearly 2,200 new units were approved. If we wait another six to nine months to change our inclusionary development policy, thousands of new units are going to come to be, and we're not going to be meeting the housing crisis with the urgency that it requires. Although those projects will have several hundred affordable units, they will stay at 70 to 100% of the A M I for the next 50 years. In a city, if the city doesn't act now to change our definition of affordability, we can make those units truly affordable for the next 50 years. I'm hopeful that the administration will present a plan and, and will implement a plan in the coming months, but I don't think that we can miss out on this opportunity to secure nearly half a century's worth of affordable housing during our massive housing boom. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Lara. The Chair recognizes Council Louis Jean. Council Louis Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and thank you, Council Coletta. We did have a hearing on this pretty early on in the year, and a lot of advocates came sort of really advising us on how we should move forward. There's a lot of pressure, especially in I D P, given the fear of a lot of other things to move, the federal government's abandonment of really investing in public housing, our need for rent control, our need for, the ability for, you know, tenants to be, the Tenants Opportunity Purchase Act. And this is something that's squarely within our jurisdiction here, I D P, the inclusionary development policy. And so we needed action on this yesterday, and it, it requires us to really hold ourselves and the administration accountable to getting something out, also that we are able to address this, because if not, developments are going to continue to do things like trying to skirt the affordability requirements by building only nine units. We need to figure out how we deepen the affordability for so many of our residents. We see evictions are increasing, income inequality is an issue, of course, and we have people day in and day out moving out of the city because it is too expensive. And so this is one of the tools that we have squarely within our toolbox as a city to try to help affordability. We have seen a lot of development over the last decade, but a lot of it has been marketing luxury development that is not helping working-class families, people who work for the city who need a place to live, too many of our black and brown communities. So it's imperative that we get action here for so many of our families who need a place to live. We all know that as city councilors, the number one call we get from residents is about housing and how do we make housing more affordable and more accessible. And so it is our duty and within our purview to act here and to act collectively for, towards a solution. And I know, I've had conversations with the administration on this, and I know that they're thinking on this, but it is extremely important that we act with all deliberate speed because the housing crisis is a crisis that we all, if not personally, hear about every day from our constituents, and so we can't wait. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Louis Jean. The Chair recognizes Council Braden. Council Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to the maker for including me as an original co-sponsor in this resolution. I am grateful to Council Lara's, for Council Lara's leadership as Chair of the Committee on Housing and Community Development, and I'm very happy to support the efforts of the community organizations such as the Coalition for a Truly Affordable Boston, Right to the City, and Boston Tenants Coalition. Over the past 10 years, 13 million square feet of new construction have been approved in Alston Brighton, and when fully built out, they will include more than 7,000 units of housing. However, the average percentage of income-restricted units in these projects is just 14%, just above the current I D P minimum of 13%. This is insufficient to meet the, both the Alston Brighton and the community resident, the city residents' needs for affordable housing. And only 20% of the total market rate units produced include homeownership units. There's also a clear need to diversify unit sizes for households of all compositions and ages. Multi-bedroom units are, have largely been excluded from new developments in Alston Brighton. I've been at meetings where the developer actually laughed at us when we asked, are you, are you going to build family-sized units? He looked at us like we're from another planet, but yes. And the projects that have been approved over the past decade, roughly 66% were either one-bedroom studio or SROs. Only 3% of the units were three bedrooms, and only 1% had been artist-live-work units. The affordably, affordably furthering fair housing ordinance has been a valuable tool that we can actually pressure developers to, you know, say, no, you can't not build housing for families. But that's something that, a tool that we're using. But the market rate new, new-built residential units are unaffordable to the majority of Alston Brighton households. Most of those earn closer to 50 to 60% of the area median income. This is why community advocates have called for the use of the neighborhood median income or the Boston median income as a, as a benchmark. The city should leverage incentives for for-profit developers to build more units that target lower income levels, which seek higher affordable housing requirements for lower, with, with lower A M Is, area median incomes. Just this summer, our office contributed to negotiations resulting in Harvard committing to designate 25% of 345 units included in Phase A of the Enterprise Research Campus in Alston as onsite income-restricted I D P rentals, the largest percentage of income-restricted units included in a single project by a private developer in Boston to date. We also negotiated for a portion of those units to specifically be set aside for households between 30 and 50% of the area median income. This is clearly, there is clearly a willingness and ability in the real estate industry and developer community to generate greater affordability, and I'm glad to join my colleagues in calling on the administration to use available tools to get the ball rolling by lowering the unit threshold to trigger I D P requirements and deepen the affordability levels of both rental and ownership units. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Braden. The Chair recognizes Council Coletta. Council Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you. As I take off my mask and get stuck in the earrings. Thank you, Council President Flynn. I want to thank the makers and join the course in calling for expeditious action on the city's inclusionary development policy. I D P, as we all know, continues to be a critical tool in creating and funding income-restricted housing. In February 2021, this body called for methods to strengthen an executive order that was then signed by Mayor Walsh in 2015, and a 2019 home rule petition was ultimately signed by the governor in 2020. However, the home rule petition did not let us put I D P, well, let us put I D P in the zoning code and strengthen linkage requirements, but as we all know, despite this work, it does not go far enough to produce affordable housing that is actually affordable. And I feel like that's one of the main things that I hear in our community, is that we're seeing all of these development proposals pop up, and it has affordable housing, but it's being built in a way that is exclusive and that is directly antithetical to the AFFH, AFFH ordinance that we passed to this body. And we know that East East's displacement crisis is exacerbated by the fact that A M I requirements do not reflect the needs of our neighborhood. And in doing research for Suffolk Downs, I know that you just went through Harvard, but through the Suffolk Downs proposal, we found out that the A M I level in East Boston is at 50%, and what they were proposing was 80% and above, and did not reflect our community whatsoever. And so we continue to build housing that is out of reach for my neighbors. And so I understand that Mayor Wu and her team is working on it, but especially as we rezone in East Boston for the first time in 30 years, I support lowering the threshold to capture more affordability in projects and deepening the affordability at the end of the day. So again, thank you to the makers, and thank you for your leadership on this. I look forward to action from the Wu Administration in the coming year. Thanks.
Thank you, Council Coletta. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter or sign on to this? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Council Royal, Council Bark, Council Coletta, Council Fernandez Anderson, Council Flaherty, Council Mejia, Council Murphy, please add the Chair. Council Lara, Louis Jean and Braden seek suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 1503. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has been adopted. We're on to personnel orders. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 1504, please.
Document number 1504, Council Flynn for Council Fernandez Anderson.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1504. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. We have six late-file matters. The additional late-file matters include a letter of absence, a personnel order, four appropriation orders from the mayor. The late-file matters should be on everyone's desk. If you just take a second to confirm that they're on there. We will now take a vote to add these items into the agenda. All those in favor of adding the late-file matters into the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The late-file matters have been officially added to the agenda. Mr. Clerk, can you please read the first late-file matter into the record, which is a letter of absence?
Letter from City Council Frank Baker. Dear Council President Flynn, please be advised that I'm unable to attend today's council meeting. A member of my staff will be present, and I will review the tape of the meeting when it becomes available. Please read this as a matter into the public record. Sincerely, Council Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. That will be placed on file. Mr. Clerk, can you please read the second late-file matter into the record, which is a personnel order?
Second late, late-file matter, personnel order, Council Flynn for Council Fernandez Anderson.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of the second late-file matter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, the third, fourth, and fifth, and sixth late-file matter into the record, which are the four appropriation orders from the mayor?
First appropriation letter from the mayor. Dear Council, I transmit herewith for your approval in order to reduce the fiscal year 23 appropriation for the reserve for collective bargaining by $2,72,216 to provide funding for various departments for fiscal year 23 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the City of Boston and C E I U local 888 citywide. I respectfully request your favorable action on this important matter. Signed by Mayor Wu. Next late-file matter, I transmit herewith a supplemental appropriation order for various departments for fiscal year 23 in the amount of $2,72,216 to cover fiscal year 23 cost items contained within the collective bargaining units between the City of Boston and C E I U local 888 citywide. The terms of the contracts are October 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2023. The major provisions of the contracts include base wage increases of 2%, 1.5% and 2% effective the first pay period of January of each fiscal year. As originally presented to you, the fiscal year 23 budget request included a reserve for collective bargaining, a separate appropriation to fund projected collective bargaining increases. A separate order has been filed to reduce that appropriation to support this supplemental request filed by Mayor Michelle Wu. I transmit for your approval in order to reduce the fiscal year 23 appropriation for the reserve of collective bargaining by $360,360 to provide funding for various departments for fiscal year 23 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the City of Boston and S E I U local 888, Mayor's Office of Housing. I respectfully request for your approval of this important matter submitted by Mayor Michelle Wu. And I transmit herewith a supplemental appropriation order for various departments for fiscal year 23 in the amount of $360,360 to cover the fiscal year 23 cost items contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the City of Boston and S E I U local 888, Mayor's Office of Housing. The terms of the contracts are October 1st, 2020 through September 30th, 2023. The major provisions of the contracts include base wage increases of 2%, 1.5% and 2% effective the first pay period of each January. the first pay period of January of each fiscal year. As originally presented to you, the fiscal year '23 budget request included a reserve for collective bargaining, a separate appropriation to fund projected collective bargaining increases. A separate order has been filed to reduce the appropriation to support this supplemental request filed by Mayor Michelle Wu.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. These late-file matters will be referred to the Committee on City Services, Innovation, Technology. We're on to the green sheets. Anyone wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. The Chair recognizes Councilor Coletta. Councilor Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I'm going to try to take this off because it'll take forever. I would like to pull docket 1413 out of the green sheets. It's on page 1 out of 19, or 7 in the packet. It's an Arts and Culture docket.
Mr. Clerk, can you please pull the committee to have it properly be before the body?
The Committee on Arts, Culture, and Special Events, Councilor Coletta.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilor Lara.
Yes.
Councilor Luizhen.
Yes.
Councilor Fernandez-Anderson.
Yes.
And Councilor Royo.
Yes.
Properly before the body.
It's properly before the body. The Chair recognizes Councilor Coletta.
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, please read it into the record.
Docket number 1413, Message and Order Authorizing the City of Boston to Accept and Expend the Amount of $150,000 in the Form of a Grant for the Waterfront Cultural Planning and Development Agency to be administered by the Mayor's Office of Arts and Culture. The grant will fund an analysis of existing pending and planned civic and cultural facilities in Boston waterfront neighborhoods.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Councilor Coletta. Councilor Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and thank you, Clerk. This is just what the clerk had said. It's a grant that will fund planned and civic cultural facilities on Boston's waterfront neighborhoods, including South Boston and the Seaport and East Boston. And given the small dollar amount and the need to ensure that our waterfront is resilient, inclusive, and accessible for everybody, with some of these civic opportunities ahead of the season next June, I encourage my colleagues to vote this docket out of committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Coletta. Councilor Coletta moves for passage of docket 1413. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Docket 1413 has passed. Anyone else wishing to bring something forward on the green sheets? We're going back to green sheets. Mr. Clerk, as Chair of the Committee in the Hall, I'd like to pull docket 1420 and 1421 from the green sheets. This should be on the last page of the green sheets. Yeah, Mr. Clerk, please read that into the record.
Docket number 1420, Order Requesting Certain Information Under 17-F Regarding Boston Public Schools, and docket number 1421, Order Requesting Certain Information Under 17-F Regarding Boston Public School Buses. Both dockets are from the Committee of the Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. These two dockets are 17Fs that were introduced by Councilor Murphy last week. Councilor Murphy, did you want to speak? The Chair recognizes Council...
Thank you.
Councilor Murphy. Councilor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you for pulling this from the green sheets. Last week, I filed two 17Fs to get information from the Boston Public Schools specific to IEPs out of compliance in transportation, not getting our students, mostly our special ed ESL and our minority students, to school on time or at all. It did not pass unanimously, which is something that has never happened in the city council, so I know there was a recess, and we are here now. But I do just want to read a couple of things about the 17F and then bring it to a vote today. So as the charter states, the 17F is when city councillors want any information from the mayor. They request it by filling out the form, which I did with these two 17Fs. This request is made under the City Charter Law, Section 17F, that at any time, the council may request from the mayor specific information as it relates to city business. This law is similar to one used by private citizens when they request public information from the government under the Federal Freedom of Information Act, or FOIA, as many people know it. We also know that 17Fs do not need to go through the chair who runs the committee, and each councillor has the right to file their own 17F at any time. And even if the question has been asked, a councillor has the right to formally get the question on the city councillor agenda for record. So that was why, and I know last week I gave four, I think, compelling reasons why I wanted this information, even though I know in the past you don't need to really give much compelling information, but I do just want to reiterate that our students who are on individual education programs are out of compliance, and are delays of our students getting to school. And our Boston Public School system has over $7 million per day to get their job done right. And in this year, with ESSER funding, which does need to be spent, they have $8.5 million per day, and I didn't even count weekends or vacations. So they definitely have the money to get this right, and this information is requested so that I can advocate and support our students. District leaders have not prioritized two BPS functions in crisis. Special ed and transportation were identified as critical BPS priorities in the BPS Deci Memorandum. Yet these functions have stagnated and, in some cases, further deteriorated since 2020. BPS has shown a lack of urgency in improving special ed services. 20% of district students are receiving special ed services, yet these services remain in disarray, and the district lacks well-understood special ed policies and procedures to make sure our students are getting proper education. And in the Transportation Department Services, driven substantial challenges with the district's transportation contract, which I know we've had hearings and we've talked to, and I talk to transportation almost daily, but despite these deficiencies, we absolutely need to make sure that our students are getting to school, that they're learning when they get there, and this information, I hope, passes today so that I can receive it from the Boston Public Schools. So thank you, President Flynn.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Murphy. Council Murphy moves for passage of docket 1420. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the docket has passed. Council Murphy moves for passage of docket 1421. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the docket has passed. We're on to the consent agenda. I have been informed by the clerk that there are zero additions to the consent agenda. The Chair moves for the adoption of the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The consent agenda has been adopted. Memorials. Today, we will adjourn our meeting in memory of the following. For Councilor Royo and the entire city council, Thawood Shaw Sahardin. For Councilor Flaherty, Loretto and Asantos, Emilio Mata. A moment of silence, please. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of those individuals that we mentioned. We are now scheduled to meet again in the Ayinella Chamber on Wednesday, December 14th, at 12 noon. Before we adjourn, I want to say thank you to the clerk's office. I want to say thank you to the city council's central staff and my colleagues, as well in the public. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
The council is adjourned.